Okay. All right. Commissioners Court will meet in a workshop session December 9, 10:00 a.m., Commissioners Court Room, County Administration Building to the South Texas Avenue Suite 106. First item is called Order, and the second is Presentation Discussion by Trailer Associates Regarding American Rescue Plan Act Funding.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, visitors. My name's Kimberly Roach. I work on behalf of the Court in the organization and administration of the ARPA funding. We actually contracted out with an outside agency, Trailer and Associates, because of the large sum of this funding, and we have them here today to present. We have two of the three team members that are working. We have Mr. Mark Taylor and Wesley Trailer. Yes, got it. And they'll be presenting today and opening for discussion for the Court, so.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. We appreciate this opportunity. We'd kind of like to start this presentation off with a short review of the ARPA program and kind of where we're at, what's going on, the money that's available, and then kind of get down in the weeds on some things pertaining to ARPA, and then at that point in time, go into discussions as far as kind of what y'all would like to see done with this money and where you'd like to see us go with this. So, as far as advancing it, do we have the controls here?
Um, yes.
All right. Y'all bear with me. Let me see if I got this down.
It may not be on. On the side, there's an on and off button first.
Oh.
There you go.
All right. All right. Now, we'll see what we got here.
There we go.
Okay. All right. So, once again, just to recap, the allocation, $44,521,550. The county has received 50% of those funds at this point in time. The remaining 50% will be received in the fall of 2022. The first tranche of these funds do not have to be fully expended in order to receive that second allocation. That will automatically be coming to y'all in the fall of next year. All right. Kind of timelines that we need to keep in mind. Remember, March 3, 2021, that is the first day that expenses were allowed in conjunction with these funds. We cannot go back prior to that date as far as the expenditure of these funds. December 31, 2024, that's when all of the funds must be allocated. December 31, 2026, is when all of the funds must be expended. So, those are kind of three important dates we need to keep in mind as we go forward with today's workshop. As far as expenditure categories, pretty much anything you're going to look at with these ARPA funds is going to fall within one of these three broad categories, and these are very broad categories. It's revenue loss, public health and economic impacts, and infrastructure, which included in infrastructures broadband, water, sewer, and stormwater drainage. Once again, these are very broad categories. There's a lot that can fit into each of these categories. First thing I'd like to talk with you about is revenue loss. Kind of go a little bit deeper into how revenue loss is determined, and then revenue loss as it pertains specifically to Brazos County. You look at the base year revenue, which is your fiscal year end, 9/30/2019. You multiply that by 1 plus the growth adjustment to the power of n over 12. And that's a lot there. I have to break out the scientific calculator on that. That gives you the adjusted gross revenue and determines if you do have a revenue loss for that time period. Now, the time period that's looked at with these ARPA funds is very specific. It's December 31, 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023. Those four specific dates and days are what we have to look at in determining revenue loss. We realize that does not coincide with the county's fiscal year. There again, that's why we're looking at the power of n over 12. Once again, base revenue, that's looked at for each year. The growth adjustment for Brazos County is 7.4%. And once again, n is the number of months since the base revenue was determined that we're looking at for each year. So, that's going to change on a yearly basis. Briefly, to talk about, do I need to be in front of this speaker? Can y'all hear me okay if I kind of walk? I'm kind of a walker and talker.
If it's going to be recorded, you need to stay in front of the mic.
Okay. The interim final rule, as it speaks to the ARPA funds, revenue loss, what these funds can be used for, here's a brief definition of it. I'm not going to read this to each of you individually, but basically what you're looking at is any funds you're claiming as revenue loss. One, you know for sure you can use these funds for anything that it specifies in the interim final rule that funds can be used for. In addition to that, once these funds go back into your general account, they can be used basically for anything to meet the needs of the citizens of Brazos County. There are some exceptions that these funds cannot be used for, but once again, keep in mind, the funds can be utilized to meet the needs of the citizens. Things that they cannot be used for, that it specifically states, is paying interest or principal on outstanding debt, replenishing rainy day, or reserve funds, or paying settlements or judgments. Once again, when you go back to the interim final rule, those are the only specific things they cannot be used for. And there again, that goes back to the fact that those particular expenses do not directly benefit the citizens. And folks, I apologize if I go through this kind of quickly sometimes. If you have any questions, feel free to ask of it at any time.
Yeah, slide number six, there's a term called pay-go in there.
Mm-hmm.
What does that mean?
Pay-go means you are performing, usually it's in reference to infrastructure projects. And basically what that means is you're doing a project with those funds. You're paying for it at that time. You are not financing that project and paying a portion of that with these funds.
Got you. Thank you.
All right. So, what are we looking at for revenue loss for Brazos County? First of all, at this point in time, once again, we are looking at December 31 of each year. The only one we can give you with any accuracy at this point in time is 2020. The other three years have been projected by your auditor's office. It has been put into this formula. There again, 2020, $6,419,821. 2021, $7,450,025. 2023, $9,854,005, for a total of $32,899,674. Once again, 2020, we are relatively comfortable with. The others, I think you're going to see those are falling pretty close, but once again, those are best guess projections at this point in time. Any questions on the revenue loss component of it? How it's looked at, how it's determined, what those funds are eligible to be used for? All right. Once again, we just plugged these in. The revenue loss does not have to go back in the general fund. That's something that most entities, if it is eligible, they want to do that. It gives them a little more flexibility in the use of these funds. If we ran these numbers, if we put the maximum projected at this point in time into that, the only other expenditures that we have at this point in time is the vaccination hubs that the county participated in. If you run those numbers, what you're looking at at this point in time is roughly $11.5 million that would need to be programmed independent of the general revenue fund. Out of that, of course, you've got some administration expenses that will be coming as well, so you're going to be looking at a little less than that that would actually be available for programming. So, with that being said, at this point in time, we would kind of like to get into some of the specific projects that has been expressed to us that there's a potential interest in, and get the pleasure of the judge and the commissioners as far as these funds, what you would like to see done with some of these funds. I'd like to bring Wesley Trailer up with me as we go through the remainder of this slide. And once again, Commissioners, Judge, this, we need y'all's interaction. We need y'all's input at this point in time to kind of move forward with this project. First thing we have on here is broadband. Wesley, would you like to come into play here? Once again, broadband is one of the specific activities that's referenced in the ARPA funds, that's eligible to be used with these funds. We're kind of looking at this basic format on each one of these activities. Once again, this is not an all-inclusive list. If there are other activities, the county would like to see considered. We definitely want that information as we go forward with this. But what we'd kind of like to talk about is the possible participants, other possible fundings for each of these activities, project cost, projected project cost, and then the timeline of implementing these particular activities.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you, Mark. And again, my name is Wesley Trailer. If y'all have any questions about broadband, how to go about getting broadband furnished to Brazos County, there's a number of ways to approach that. There's also, as you see here, we've kind of left this as a blank slate. Would love and really need your feedback here on broadband. We've got some blanks up there, right? So, we've got other possible funding, projected cost, and timeline. You know, right now, the state of Texas, counties in Texas, cities in Texas have never seen so many different funding avenues for broadband. Your coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds are certainly one avenue for broadband, you know, and getting more of that into Brazos County. But one thing that I do want to make sure that we go over is the fact that not all of broadband that needs to be tackled in Brazos County, not all of that necessarily needs to come out of your coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds. Again, that's y'all's decision, but I do want to make sure that everyone is aware that there are other funding avenues for broadband that we're learning about every single day. We do know that the comptroller has got some money right now for things like something as simple as replacing poles and getting infrastructure on poles at about a 50% cost share. So, kind of banking off of existing infrastructure and getting new infrastructure in from that case in point. Any questions or ideas before we go a little bit further down this road on broadband, or things you want us to be looking at or considering for Brazos County?
One of the things you mentioned was CARES Act could be a part of this, and I just don't know if we have any CARES Act funds still available. My assumption is that we've spent everything on doing what we needed to do.
I think that's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, I guess, we're all still wondering what the infrastructure bill allocation, how it's going to be allocated, where to go for the money, all those types of things.
And that's what we're looking at as well. We do know that there's going to be a tremendous amount of money allocated broadband in that infrastructure bill. What we're trying to figure out, though, is how is a Brazos County going to get that money? Is it going to be an allocation, or are we going to have to compete for that money against other entities in Texas? Sometimes you just never know who's going to get the allocation and who has to compete for it, but we've got eyes and ears open as it relates to that. If you'll look over here on the screen, you'll see a broadband coverage map for Brazos County, and I think this might help us in determining, hey, what's right for the citizens of Brazos County and figuring out how much to try and allocate towards broadband. The green part of that map on the inside of Brazos County are areas that are covered quite well with broadband. If you look to the light pink or in red shaded areas, that's where it's a little bit harder for folks in Brazos County to get broadband right now. Those are some areas of opportunity that we've identified through a number of different open source data to try and figure out, hey, if we do go this route, trying to get broadband in Brazos County, where do we want to try and look at kind of attacking this and lending our helping hand? That's broadband. But before I move on to another topic, I just want to make sure that we've addressed any questions or concerns, or just general commentary that the Court has on just the topic of broadband at this point in time.
On the broadband, the data you're showing there, that's the standard that is 2 down, 20, no, I'm sorry, 2 down, 25 up?
So, it is 25 down, 3 up?
25 down, 3 up. Okay.
Correct.
Do we have any cost estimates at all to cover these areas of the county that don't currently have adequate coverage? Have we seen anything?
Yeah, so, I personally have not seen any cost estimates yet. To see that, I think it'd be appropriate to go down that avenue if directed by the Commissioners Court, if we want to try and start sizing that up or start soliciting different folks. I think one way to really figure it out is to put out a solicitation to different providers of that type of service and say, hey, what does it look like? That way, we can receive bids and start seeing a number of bids from folks to kind of see what, you know, what is the average between some of those bids? And may not even necessarily award something out of that, but to try and get a very good idea of what the market looks like right now. I think we've all seen across a couple of different industries, a large swing in pricing.
Sure.
So, I would be very interested in, I would definitely advise soliciting a number of folks for trying to figure out what that might look like. But I do apologize, I don't have an estimate for what it would look like to really kind of finish that gap or complete that gap in service.
Wesley, I also believe that we don't want to, as a county, we don't want to be in the service business. In other words, we don't want people paying us for their coverage. We want to supply infrastructure or the highway, if you will, where private entities could serve our citizens.
Correct. Correct. I mean, that's offering a new service that you haven't in the past, and a service that is very competitive right now in the private marketplace. You know, between you, me, and the fence, you know, I kind of just feel like that's something, if I wasn't expert in it, I wouldn't try to jump into the game at this point with when other folks have got a 45-year head start on it at trying to provide that and compete against that and add that to kind of your arsenal of things to keep up with.
Can we get, I'm sorry. I don't guess we've got any idea how other counties might be looking at whether it's use of this funds or even the state funds that might be available in the future, how they're looking at, how they may be able to get broadband out in their counties. I mean, you know, I don't want us to reinvent the wheel or anything. There ought to be, hopefully, there's somebody that's also been thinking about it, whether it's, and the state maybe, since they're providing some funding, maybe they've got some ideas about how we might be able to reach all those areas that really don't have the service, you know. I mean, that map makes it look like there's a lot of pretty good service in Brazos County, but I know that there's a lot of folks out there that don't have the service, and so those are really who we'd like to reach. And I don't have the best way to do it and have the best way to spend money to try to get it done. We don't want to pick winners and looters out in the private sector, but we still, however we can get that accomplished best, I think, I mean, I think that's, I think it's an honorable goal to try to get those citizens out there that don't have the service to be able to get to them.
And Judge, that's great feedback and a great question. What we're seeing in other counties right now regarding setting up some of that infrastructure for broadband, and you said, "Don't reinvent the wheel," that they're looking at it as a wheel approach. They're calling it a hub-and-spoke approach where they're at, and what they're doing is, say, a county's got, let's just say, to keep things simple, four precinct offices that are spread out kind of evenly throughout the county. What they're asking of these providers is to go in and set up that framework between kind of a centralized area of the county out to one of those precinct offices, so that you've got the area covered between kind of a centralized area going out to kind of more of a perimeter location. You're helping or subsidizing the private industry in doing that if you're offering some of your funds for that or helping them and going after other federal funds. At that point in time, that's a great blessing to them that they've got that put into place, and now the last mile service provider, so to speak, can come in off of that hub-and-spoke design that's already right there. That's the hardest part for all those folks in most of these deals. And that's what we're hearing, that's what we're seeing being formulated in other counties and other cities that we work with right now. So, if that's clear, let me know on that, but if I need to explain any of that a little bit more, I'm also happy to go a little bit further.
With the help of the COG, the surrounding counties, which were rural counties, that there was some Fed money available, and I believe that they currently have better broadband, better internet service than Brazos County, because we're an urban county, there wasn't money available for us. But I guess my question also, Wesley, is can we use some of the infrastructure that the COG's already put in place in these surrounding counties to help serve the outlying areas of Brazos County? You know, in other words, can we work in conjunction with them?
Yeah, I think so, and I think that's a good utilization of existing assets and sharing, and you can set up MOUs to try and make sure that that's done. It's just a matter of coming together and setting up user agreements, finding out where those gaps are in service, but that's certainly something we're willing and able to help with. It's just a matter of how you want to approach it.
I think they've already got a blueprint or a plan in place of how to do it and how to work with private entities. Judge, you know more about that than I would, of course.
And I think Mark wants to go over a little bit of RDOF funding and kind of talk to some of the funding that might be available per block group here in Brazos County, too.
Yeah.
And that's part of the federal funding that I think you're mentioning with the COG.
Thanks. We're going to kind of be tag-teaming through the remainder of this presentation, folks. So, any questions you have, just throw out there, and hopefully, one of us can get you the answer you need. Going back to this map, I would like to provide a little more clarification on it. Once again, the green areas are in the areas that have at least 25 down, 3 up. What we're looking at population-wise, based on the information we've been able to obtain, is a little less than 4% of the population of Brazos County does not have that minimal Wi-Fi service. Once again, that is the lighter red colors. Once again, there's some overlap with these colors as well. What those red colors or pink colors, or however you want to look at that, what those represent, those are federal funds that are available based by block, coming down to Brazos County, that's directly available to providers as subsidies to provide either increased or new service to those areas. So, that is one form of funding outside of what the county would have to do that's available to those providers at this point in time. Those funds are currently available. Now, whether they have been accessed by any of the providers or not, that we do not know the answer to, and we would be more than happy to try to obtain that information for you if you would like. Once again, this is broken down to the block level, which is pretty minute. Some of these blocks, they have identified as having only two locations that would benefit from this service. Therefore, the subsidy for that particular block is going to be minimal. There's other blocks they have identified that are pretty good size, that they have over $300,000 available to provide Wi-Fi to that particular block. So, there are some additional funds out there. We do not know if they have been accessed, if so, to what degree. It is not mandatory that the providers access these funds. What we're seeing in some situations is they're kind of picking and choosing, saying even though there's subsidies out there, it's still not enough for us to get service to this rural area and to offset our costs to get it there. That's the information I think we need to try to get and see where are they utilizing these funds, what holes are left at that point in time.
Yeah.
I would appreciate that.
About?
I think it's important that we find that out.
The definition of broadband, okay, 25, there's a lot of data out there that says 25, 3 is still inadequate for the type of usages that people are looking at, and that really the standard in looking at things we ought to be looking at is 110, 100 up, 100 down, and 10 up.
Right.
That's where you get to where you can do a lot more things and capabilities, and, you know, broadband is going to get broader as we go forward. So, is there a way that we can get the same type of data on 50 and 5 or 110?
Yes, sir.
And look at where those are as far as that goes.
We'll be more than happy to get that information.
I think as a standard, we need to be looking at at least 50 and 5, if not 110.
Okay.
My preference would be 110, because I know inside the incorporated areas of Brazos County, 110 is very affordably available.
Right.
And it's going to get even more affordable with what's going on. So, I'd like to see kind of that and see where we look. My thought would be is we're going to look a lot different than that map right now.
Yeah, and we will definitely get that information and present it back to Commissioners Court.
And I'm sure that if you talk to the folks over at COG with what they've done with BV Cognit, I'm sure they've got data as far as some of that goes to, it used to be Michael, but now Michael Parks, but now, have y'all talked to anybody over at the COG?
No, sir, we have not. There again, the intent behind this workshop is to receive feedback from y'all. Y'all direct us on where you want us to go at this point in time, and then we'll move forward and report back to you once at that point in time. We don't want to chase rabbits if you don't want us going there.
I agree with the other comments that have been made, to the extent that we can partner with the COG on BV Cognit, on building off of their fiber optic loop, to where we can find areas where we might want to enhance the quality of broadband that's already in existence out there for people in, you know, densely enough populated areas to where it makes sense. And then, the private provider can come in and say, hey, if you get me this far, I can get that last mile, or I can get to the home type of stuff. So, thank you.
At least my highest priority, and I don't think anybody on the Court would disagree, is schoolchildren being able to access, to do their work. Were we ever to have to not have school again where they could continue to work? And I wonder if the school districts don't have an interest in that also.
Oh, I'm sure they definitely do. And once again, kind of what we're seeing throughout with entities we are assisting is pretty much exactly uniform with what you're saying. We realize that Wi-Fi is the wave of the future. We realize we need to get it to all of our citizens. Same time, we don't necessarily want to reinvent the wheel. We don't want to get in the broadband business ourselves. We've got enough to take care of without going there. So, what do we need to do to get to that point, to ensure that we are providing broadband as best we can throughout the county without getting in the broadband business?
I think that says it all.
You talked about a time, I'm sorry, Commissioner. You, you talked about a time, I'm sorry, Commissioner, you talked about a timeline earlier, and I'm certainly not speaking on behalf of the court, but I would love to have at least a starting place on this project within six months.
And, and I definitely think that's doable. On this particular thing, we kind of, we kind of have our general charge at this point in time, I think. One thing we need to take a look and see is, is what actually, let's, let's forget the 25, three at this point in time, let's look at, at stronger service, see how that affects our map. Get with the current providers, see what they are doing for accessing, say, these ARDOF funds. The other funds, I think Wesley briefly mentioned to y'all, is the, the poll lines, that's, is it House Bill 1505?
1505.
Yeah, House Bill 1505 is going to be stood up the first part of next year, I think by March, that's going to be, March 22nd, somewhere along in there. What that will do is provide funding to these providers for any poll replacements that's needed in conjunction with providing broadband service. It will provide, Wesley, help me if I'm wrong, 50% of the poll up to a cost of $5,500 per poll.
That's correct.
So that in and of itself would be a good, a good start for some of these entities.
Wesley, another thought would be that we could use county facilities, and I'm only speaking specifically of two, but we've got a rather significant yard out in, for our road and bridge in Precinct Two. Were, were this system to be wireless, I could see no reason that we couldn't use county facilities for towers.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea. Anything to, to offset, a lot of broadband costs is, is in the form of lease costs. If you already got those assets and we don't have to factor in a cost for that, other than just the, the installation cost and ongoing maintenance, that's great if we can kind of take off that, that, you know, continual lease cost. So that's, that's a very good idea.
Once again, we're not trying to rush by any means. At this point in time, once again, the direction that we're receiving from y'all is to pursue this.
Yes.
Get with the current providers, see what their intentions are, providing additional service, see how they're going to access these ARDOF funds and, and other funds that we're aware, aware of, and then get back with Commissioner's Court, provide you with that information to move forward with this as, as one of the potential uses of these funds. Once again, just for clarification purposes, I know we talked about the lost revenue. This is a prime example. ARDOF funds can be used, if you will, directly allocated to broadband service, or if you want to say, let's put these funds back in our general revenue, then pay it out of that, that is an option as well. But, but broadband is definitely, definitely an eligible expenditure of these funds.
Okay, so let's go back then and help me figure out context, and, and y'all just verify. The way I look at this is, is if we go to slide number, I guess, eight, the lost revenue, I realize that 21, 22, and 23 are at this time estimates, but close approximations of what we anticipate things will be. The way I look at it is, is there's ARPA money that has to stay above that line, and if you go over to, what we're estimating is, if you go over to slide 11, we're estimating that money, that says balance of the program, that's the money that will be still under the Treasury's guidelines for appropriate uses to qualify in its use. So we would have about 11 and a half million that is still ARPA funds, subject to the restrictions. We could leave money out of that 32 million, or about 33 million, we could leave that in that category, or if we took it down to the general fund, we lose all restrictions that are the same. So I kind of look at it as, as, you know, we've got about 11 and a half million that's ARPA restricted, and about 33 million that's general fund, should we so desire to do that, where we have lost all of the ARPA restrictions, or, or is it some of the Treasury's restrictions on appropriate use?
Once again, kind of backing up to, I apologize.
There's no slides.
Slide seven?
Yes.
Those restrictions would still be tied to those funds.
To the general fund?
To the general fund, yes, sir.
Okay, yeah. Would you mind getting me a larger print version of that, because my eyes are just not quite good enough.
Sure.
To get off of that.
We'd be more than happy to.
Thank you. And, and maybe elaborate on that, because the words are always, you know, what does that really mean? The, the reason I asked the pay-go question.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And there again, we will further define the pay-go, as a matter of fact, and the, and I keep, once again, when we first came before y'all, we talked to y'all about the interim final rule.
Yes.
Which is kind of an oxymoron. It's still the interim final rule. We, we do not have a final rule out there yet. But within the interim final rule, they do provide a definition of pay as you go.
Okay.
And we will, we will be more than happy to provide that to you as well.
Any other thoughts on either revenue loss or broadband before we kind of can continue through?
I think the discussion is, is productive in that we really need to work with those services that are already out there. I think the, the COG has a, a great amount of work that we could benefit from, and then enhance in some way with, you know, that that we can provide. I'd like to see more happen with our books. I want to stretch it as much as we can for the services of our community.
Very good.
And, and once again, this is a finite amount of funding y'all have, and you need to, if you will, get the best bang for your buck.
Exactly.
Provide the service that's needed to, to your citizens with, without duplicating, necessarily duplicating services.
Right, wherever we could work together makes sense.
And Commissioner Aldrich, I'd, I'd just like to back up just a little bit, as, as far as your understanding of the revenue loss that's spot on, but that's exactly correct.
Yeah, well, and I, and I think our challenge is going to be more of how we allocate that about 11 and a half million dollars than it is the approximately 33 million dollars.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's a, a difference, but making sure we get all of that used appropriately, I think is going to be a bigger challenge than the other. Can you think of any good reasons, and have other counties, from what you've seen so far, not when it's appropriate, and they've got an exact number, who have decided to leave those revenue, lost revenue or municipalities, to leave the lost revenue numbers under the interim guidelines, or has everybody just pretty much said, hey, we're taking that down into the general fund?
No, if, if they have the ability and they do have lost revenue, they're wanting to utilize that and place it within their general.
I would think that, but I was just curious if there was something.
Yeah, yeah. Once, once again, that's pretty much what we're seeing throughout. Now, there are some that don't, of course, are not experiencing the lost revenue. All of that comes into play. The growth factor is a key component on that as well, and that, that's what gets you into the lost revenue is, is the, the growth that Brazos County incurred prior to COVID, once again, that's above, without, without going too deep into it, ARPA says you can use a standard growth factor of 4.1%, or you can use an average of your growth factor that three years prior to COVID.
Okay.
Whichever is greater.
Okay, and that's why we're at the 7.4.
That's why you're at the 7.4, because it's been calculated that y'all's growth for those three years averaged with 7.4%.
Here's the growth, yeah. You're catching up with it, what it requires.
Yes. Right. And once again, as, as, and I know I'm repeating myself on some things, but for 2020, those numbers are pretty accurate, 21, 22, 23. I don't think you're going to see them off much, but they're as accurate as we can get at this point in time with our projections. Of course, 2021, probably February, early March of next year, we'll, we'll know accurate numbers on, on that as well. Once again, those numbers have to be determined as of December the 31st of, of whatever year your calculator you are.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
All right, we have, we've gone through broadband. Another important topic that, that we get to discuss and, and talk about all across the state is mental health, a lot of different services or facilities to enhance the community's posture as it relates to providing mental health services. That's what everyone's talking about across the state, a lot of people are anyways. Again, we, we don't know all that exists in, in Brazos County at this point in time. We, we know a little bit, but we don't want to say that we're the experts just yet on that. But we're certainly open to hearing a little bit more about y'all's experience and y'all's opinions on, on mental health capacities inside of Brazos County. And we wanted to put that up there, just based on experience with, with other counties and other cities in the state of Texas at this point in time. So we've, we've put that up here for, for mental health. There's a lot of different ways to, to look at it, of course, and, and I compare it to, to our broadband discussion as well in terms of, do we want to get in that business, or do we want to try and lean on existing providers or folks that may have a little bit quicker ramp up if we do decide that this is a priority for the county? So just a, a, a point for consideration and, and discussion here with the county.
Well, the county has agreements with a number of nonprofits that we help fund on an annual basis, and many of them directly provide mental health services, thinking of NAMI and, and MHMR, but also the Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers and Big Sisters, the Scotty's House, the Sexual Resource Center, prenatal clinic. They all deal with people that are particularly stressed and have mental health issues. And I would think that if we were to address the mental health funding, that we would continue to look at our partners that are already providing these services in the, in the county and that we have relationships with.
Do you have any idea, ideas about what other counties are doing, how they're using that money?
Yeah, other, other counties that I'm working with have a lot of the, the same relationships, Commissioner Berry, that you were just speaking to as well, across Texas. And what they're doing is they are, right now, they're, some of them have already made direct contributions and allocations towards those programs or organizations. Some of them are still trying to figure out how much they, they want to contribute. A lot of them contribute within their, their annual budget regardless of an influx of, of, of local fiscal recovery funds, right? So maybe each year it's 10,000 to, you know, $10,000 to, to 20 different organizations, and that's what they've done always. But maybe now for the next three years, they're increasing that for, for each organization. That's, that's what we're seeing a lot of right now. You know, they've put in a formal request system at their counties with a format, and all these different organizations fill out the forms, submit it to the counties and say, hey, these are the dollars that we're looking for, and this is what we're going to do with the dollars. This is our timeline, and this is what we think is going to be the outcome of, of spending these dollars in this particular program. That's, that's what we're seeing right now. I think that, I think it's a, a good way to do it, too, because you get to hear with that request of money, people start telling their story. They, they start telling you a little bit more about what they're seeing out there in the real world in the community, maybe something that, that, you know, it's something you haven't maybe thought to ask, or you haven't, you haven't looked for, but then you get to find it out, something that's going on in the community because people are looking for a funding solution to a problem that they're seeing. And now you're getting to learn about it. So I think that's been a pretty good eye-opener for some of the other counties that we work in.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I guess my only concern about that would be is, is that we make sure that the entities that we are funding realize that this is not an ongoing revenue stream that we are creating
Correct.
For them, that it is a time limited amount of money to where their anticipation is, it would, clearly, we don't give them the anticipation that beyond the period of time that we have the ability to allocate these funds, that we're going to continue to allocate comparable amounts of money. I think the biggest concern over all of this for me is, is making sure, since this is over a brief time period of time, one-time money, that we make sure that we have, that we don't create an ongoing need for funding with whatever we use this money to create, unless we have in our pro forma of that entity, mental health, whatever it's going to be, medical examiner's office or office, like we're, it was one of our topics, that we have a plan, once these funds are no longer available, to, for it to stand on its own, with its own revenue neutral, or a finite amount of participation subsidy that we know that we can handle from an ongoing general fund allocation for the county's part in it. The other thing I'd like to say, too, is, is my hope would be, and I don't know if it's possible, but I'd really like to see, because, I mean, the city of Bryan and the city of College Station got almost comparably the same amount of money that the county did. If you combine the two, it's probably more than the county got. So, but I mean, to the extent that we can coordinate some of these efforts between the two cities, and for programming for the future, to the extent that we could bring in the university and the university system.
Yes.
Looking at what some of their ideas would be, where we've got the ability to have these funds available to get us over a hump to where, three years from now, at the end of the expenditures, like, four, four years from now, the end of the expenditures of what we have here, that we can have a plan for those additional things. We can help build it, but then have it stand on its own type of things. But I'd really, I think that, to the extent that we can collaborate, not only with the COG, but with the city of Bryan, city of College Station, Texas A&amp;U, would be to all of the community's benefit.
Yeah, and Blynn.
Yes.
No, no question?
Yes.
I, I, I think cooperation and collaboration is definitely the way we want to go on this, and we don't want to be funding any full-time positions that are going to be an ongoing expense.
Yes.
And both of the, well, all three of the ISDs, Navasota ISD has a large area in Brazos County.
Yeah.
Doesn't have a whole lot of students from there, but I mean, to the extent that we can collaborate with the ISD and CSIS.
Yeah.
Collaboration is the way.
Absolutely.
Acute mental health care is an issue that I, I really want to be concerned about also, and I understand that our sheriff's department, it's their job to, to deal with acute mental health care. They, and they make about 500 interventions a year, and we currently have to carry those people to an out-of-county facility. And, and I would love to know the dollar amount that we spent. Five, 500 cases, i- if it's taken a full day for a sheriff's deputy to deal with each of those, and then the travel cost on top of that, that's a significant amount of money that we're already spending.
Commissioner, it's, it's two deputies, they don't go alone.
So it's two.
Right, two.
Even better, yeah, yeah.
And, and sometimes it's four, because it's two taking someone and two bringing someone else back at the, at similar times. So it is a major expense.
We're spending a significant amount of money right now, no question about that.
No question.
At, at point of clarification, as far as treatment facilities and inpatient care, it's my understanding that previously there was a facility here. Currently, there is not a facility for inpatient care of, of mental health patients. Is that correct?
There were two, then there were none, then there was one, now there are none again.
Okay, all right. Once again, just for clarification from the court, is that something y'all would like us to, to pursue further and get additional information on as far as an inpatient facility?
I'm, I'm interested in that.
Yeah.
There's a need, yes.
Yeah, and the university, I've been, had some discussions with them. They're, they're interested in looking, too. I mean, they may participate, not at the, at the facility level, but, I mean, they've got a psychology department out there that's interested. We've had, we've sat down and had some discussions with them about it. I think they would be interested in participating. And once somebody's incarcerated, then it is a sheriff's responsibility to deliver and bring back. But it's and bring back, but it's, both cities may pick up somebody who's having a mental crisis, and then they have to deal with them, and if they don't get incarcerated, then it's the cities that are dealing with it. So, the cities also have some of that, should, and I think they do, I mean, I think that's a discussion that we should have with both cities, and, and we've had some preliminary discussions with it.
Yes.
I, you know, I, I, there's no question there's a need for a, some type of facility, probably is a, that short-term crisis, three days, seven days or something, not a long-term. We do have promises out there, they deal with, with alcohol or drug, you know, that sort of rehabilitation, so, and, and we've got those issues around Brazos County, and I'm happy to have them out there, and they deal with that. But, but when you're having a mental crisis, we just don't have any facility close, and if they, they get arrested and are taken to jail, then it's sheriff's responsibility to take them somewhere else, so.
In addition.
So, I, yeah, it is a discussion I think we need to have.
In addition to that, I'm concerned with the cares, the, the providing of care for juveniles. We don't have enough, I understand that there's one psychologist, psychiatrist in the area that will treat juveniles, so that's an issue that we need to look into. I'm not saying that we can solve it, but we do need to address it, I think. And a lot of times when we're talking mental health, we're talking about adults, but we've got some juveniles that really need to have some care, some treatment, ongoing.
Yeah, with regard to that, I think the EDC, our Economic Development Corporation, has done some work in exploratory types of things relative to this, and since both cities and the university participate in the EDC, they might be a good venue for us to have them work through that, because I do think that having a, you build a mental health ecosystem, and a part of that is a inpatient facility, but you also have to have all of the clinicians to where you've got adolescent psychologists, and those types of things, and, you know, what, what are the, what are the cornerstones that we have to put out there, and what opportunity does this, you know, present for us to be able to kick off that mental health ecosystem of providers? Because it makes a lot of difference to the citizens in our community, and from an economic development perspective, it's also another thing where you can say, hey, we got that,
Right.
We've got the checkmark in that box, too. I don't know how far down on the list it is, but it certainly doesn't go as a disadvantage.
Right.
So, there may be some opportunities to work with the EDC relative to that, too. And I kind of look at, you know, I know, I may be jumping the gun a little bit, but the medical examiner's office, I think they're, they're the same model. The only difference is, is that right now, we have, you know, we're transporting people either for needs of a medical examiner's, you know, documentation, or we're transporting people who have or in a mental crisis situation outside of the community.
Yes.
You know, if, my guess would be is, is our surrounding counties are also doing the same type of thing.
Yes.
If we became the hub of both of these two types of things, both mental health and medical examiner's office, and in collaborations, use this money, and all got behind the idea of creating a, a, a mental health inpatient facility with all of the things that you have to have to go with that, or what it would take to get that, and a medical examiner's office, both, I think those would be two real, real, real good things for us to create, or take a leadership role in trying to create within the community, and
Yes.
And ask for participation from all the other entities as well.
Right.
Well, and
And one of the local, we're going to go back to the COG, they have done extensive investigation of a medical examiner's office, so you might want to visit with them.
Yeah. Kimberly and Leslie went last week to look at the medical examiner's office in Conroe, and they've also been up to the medical examiner's office in Dallas to look, and they're talking with people at A&amp;M as a possible location site for a medical examiner's office. So, I think we're well on our way to giving serious thought about whether or not we are going to establish one, so.
Well, in a medical examiner's office, statutorily is the county. That's, that is where it, it's, it's the county that would be, employees of the county, and the county would have to be the one that would run it. Now, with, here, with, with the university, I mean, they're very interested and been involved, and, and with the Health Science Center, and they're, they're very interested in it, and certainly they're, they're willing to participate with, with potentially two doctors for, for, for the docs that would actually do the medical exams. But that's, that's kind of the difference between mental health and the medical examiner. Medical examiner was really a, would ultimately be a county department. The mental health side of it, my hope would be that somebody else is going to be able to run it, but I hope we can all get together to help pay for whatever the operation cost that's going to ultimately, I mean, we know, we might could use funds to build something and get that done, but long-term, there's going to be costs. There's operation costs for both of them, and my hope would be that we can all sit down and decide kind of how, how it's going to benefit everybody, to have both of those closed, and how we can all share the cost that we all know is going to happen. And, and you're right, with a lot of those things, we're, we're paying for pieces of those right now. I mean, you know, and those costs we may be able to reduce, you know, from that perspective, but there's other things that everybody else needs to be looking at, too, other, other governments.
Sure. So, on, on the mental health side, the, the county can choose to be a, a supporting participant, if you will, whereas the medical examiner's office, you're going to have to take the lead and be the one that stands that up, and be ultimately responsible for the operation. And those are two very key things that we do need to keep in mind as we move forward in, in looking at both of these. Could also come into place on, on the timing of these projects. Once again, I know, thinking about it, in 2021, 2026 sounds like a long ways off, but when you start looking at some of these programs and, and what's involved in these, it's going to be here before we know it.
Well, and I really do, in the discussions we've had on both of these issues, it seems like both cities, the county and the university have an interest. So, we, I don't know exactly how much that is, but everybody's interested right now, which in the past, when we've had discussions about those sorts of things, we were all kind of in different areas. But right now, maybe the stars are going to align, and maybe we can get something down. That'd be my hope. We've got money available to maybe stand something up, and my hope would be the operations, of course, and we could get together and figure out how we can make that thing operate.
The problem with mental health, the facilities we've had in the past, has been management, their management.
No question.
And so, I think there are facilities in town that could be used, it's just getting the right management in there to run it properly, because I think the support for the community is there from both cities, the county, both PDs and the sheriff's office, and Blynn and the university, the support from the community is there.
I think so, too.
I think it's just been a, a poor management of the facilities that's been a problem in the past.
Well, I think the other thing that has compounded that is, is reimbursement from, I mean, you know, when, when we went from two to zero, that was all based on a change in allocation of revenue from what was available through private payer insurance or government insurance, and everybody everywhere across the country shut down on that one. So, you know, and that's a, you know, that's unpredictable, it really is. But you have to build in the ability to be able to have sustainability, even if that takes place, but that's the main issue on inpatient, the inpatient component of all that.
Yeah.
And I agree with you also, is, is we've, you know, had, had a few swings and misses.
Yeah, for sure.
Specific to the examiner's office, and since the county would be the, the underlying responsible entity for that, has there been any kind of discussion on project cost, what it would potentially cost to, to get that initiated and get that program stood up?
Well, the COG did have a study several years ago that outlined the cost and the how we could share the, the expense with other counties that use the services, so there's a basic, I would say, a basic plan, would you, out there at the COG?
Montgomery County is, Montgomery, Montgomery County is currently building a medical examiner's office, I think it's twenty-two thousand square feet, and I think that it's around twelve million dollars is what the cost of the facility is, is looking like, so.
Yep.
And, and I don't really know what the operation would be. I know that there were estimates back when the COG, back in 2014, I think it was, 2013, when we, well, that was when we originally started talking, yeah, 2014, 2013, the estimates were a good bit low.
Yeah.
Because what we did, the county participated in a, and actually paid for most of the cost of a study.
That's right.
That, that was done back in, I think that came, I don't remember what year it was, maybe 2015, 2016, and it turned out, I think, that it's, it was like six or eight million dollars is what the cost of a facility was going to cost, and then, I don't remember, like a million, two million, three annual cost, and so, and at that time, there wasn't as much interest in, I think, the others participating as much. We weren't sure, so the county kind of stepped back and said, you know, that's a big chunk to step off into, and, and we just decided not to do it. But, you know, we're looking now with, there's money there, and I can tell you, we had a COG meeting yesterday, and this discussion came up. Everybody there is interested, of course, they all know that Brazos County will be the one that will have to take the lead on it. So, and, and so, at least the initial funding would be Brazos County if we move forward, so they're all on board. Everybody there was on board.
You're just spending your money.
Well, of course.
Well, you know, the, the thing three people can agree on, assume people can agree on is what the third should spend for money, that's
That's kind of the way it was. So, anyway, I, I, I do think it's something we need to pursue and to kind of decide, and, and I mean, if you're looking, if we look at what Montgomery County's doing, and I think they were doing like two hundred autopsies a year, they, they first moved into, refitted a building and turned it into a medical examiner's office, they were doing like two hundred a year, I think, right now they're doing about a thousand, and so, they've, they've had to expand, and they're, they're working on building a, a medical examiner's office currently. I, I don't know, I, I wouldn't be surprised that if, if we built one, we may have that kind of